Section B, the office of mayor or councilman shall also be deemed vacant upon declaration by the council after the incumbent's one resignation, two ceasing to be a qualified elector of the city within the meaning of the state constitution, three failure of the person elected or appointed to the office to qualify therefore within ten days after the time for his term of office to commence, four ceasing to reside in the city, five absence from the city for thirty days without the consent of the council, or six absence from meetings of the council for sixty days without the consent of the council. So if this measure is placed on the ballot, that is where it will end up and if the voters approve.
Except it's going to stay state law instead of...
So is that what the council wants to do before adopting the resolution?
And will there be a narrative like on the resolution next to it has the effect of blah, blah, blah?
If there is a voter's pamphlet, we the city, we have to provide an explanatory statement to the voters.
Okay.
And it has to be totally unbiased.
The lawyer reviews that to make sure because Perry of Sheriff will be there, it has to be, as she said, unbiased, it can't draw a conclusion, it has to be very articulate and it's, so the lawyer will scan over that.
I think it's important if possible to have that.
I agree, absolutely.
Well, the second is on the table.
Yeah, I know, so any more comments? Yes. I just want to get a feeling from everybody else, just briefly please, because we're taking a lot of time tonight. Section B and number five, absence from the city for thirty days without the consent of the council, let's just take just that. And in my example, I kind of took that apart, right, I should say, added to it because to me, that could be construed as, I can live in Hawaii, be gone for twenty-nine days, come back here, be on a city council meeting and go back to Hawaii for another thirty days, twenty-nine days and do that three sixty-five. You would have a very high air of privilege. But you're right, I would only be flying twenty-four flights, twelve times. That's only a hundred dollars a flight, that's a piece of... My point is...
I don't think that anybody in that...
Isn't the intent of this for us to limit council positions and mayor position to be dedicated to people that live in this city, that have a stake in this city? To me, that opens the door.
I...
I know, it's kind of ridiculous. Kathy is actually...
I'm sorry, I'm sure it's... I was just going to say, I thought we went over this in our last meeting.
Yes.
And...
You know, I kind of look at it as, well, you know, our other sister cities have done this. The document, just like most documents in government, we've all, and if this does not accomplish what we need it to accomplish, perhaps a future council will look at tightening up the language even further. That's just my thought on that.
I don't want, Mr. President, I don't want to sound too clever on this, and I appreciate it because you remember the last council meeting when I had similar concerns and wording in remembrance of in a previous century that there was a serious theological discussion among theologians of how many angels could dance on the head of a pin. And it was never decided with any definition.
Thank you.
How many other small angels?
Well, just to kind of put a point on your pin, we could, pen intended of course, we could debate this, you know, and parse each one of these things.
That's true.
At infinitum. I guess I'd have to agree with Yuzi that if this appears to be a problem at some future time, we could add wording to say, for instance, absence from the city for thirty days within a calendar year. If it becomes a problem or appears that it potentially could be a problem, that's something that could be added. But given the apocryphal story that Perry told us, I don't think we want to take the risk of, and I'm sure it was apocryphal for you, I'm sure it was terrible, just, we wouldn't want to take the risk of making too many changes that could cause confusion. So, you know, one issue at a time and wait and see what happens, I think would be the best approach.
Yeah, it has to pass, even if we do this work tonight, the voters still have to pass this. And so that's the question, we'll find out.
I'm just satisfied with the discussion.
Well, let's go ahead and call the question then.
Grant?
Hi.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Spark?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Yeah, Meehan?
Yes.
Now, the motion was to accept the changes outlined by the attorney. So in order to start this ballroom, you actually need to adopt the legislation because upon the council's adoption of this resolution, I'm going to ask for clarification on that wording to if we're going to stay within the meaning of the state constitution or go back to under state law before you would move to adopt. So upon your adoption of this resolution as drafted or with changes, that starts that ballroom. Then what you're doing by that is you're notifying your city elections officer that you're going to put this on the ballot. And then the elections officer gets it to the attorney, drafts up the wording, the ballot title, fills out the forms, we put the notice in the newspaper, and we start drafting the draft for a statement. So the resolution needs to be formally adopted by you.
Let's first do that piece about the constitution of law. Lawyer recommends the law. Because it... Yeah, please. Because it not only covers the state constitution idea, but also covers the state statute. So I would defer to, personally, I would defer to the lawyer's writing rather than our esteemed colleague.
So is there any other changes besides that?
I think that's the one.
Okay, then I would make a motion that we adopt the resolution as a council that on this exhibit A, with the change in section B, number two, to change it from ceasing to be a qualified elector of the city within the meaning of the state constitution to ceasing to be a qualified elector of the city under state law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is the movement second to make that change? Any other further comments? Steve, now let's go ahead and call the ballroom.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Spark?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Yeah, Meehan?
Yes.
Ryan?
Hi.
Anything about...
All right, guys, we have an unscheduled item on the new business section, item C. We do not see it there because it was a disappearing ink. Actually, Beanie is going to come up and talk to us and Steve's going to chime in. This is concerning the salmon enhancement program and a grant opportunity that we figured would take up, we should strike all the hard ones. Mr. Robinson?
Speaker Robinson, salmon enhancement.
Chairman.
Person. The reason why I stated on the agenda, we always try to stay under the radar.
Is that solar on the pond?
Yeah, hey. We had a, our salmon trial and handsome meeting, a curiosity thing with Edmond last Thursday, wasn't it? And the intent of that was our, if you look on the photograph page, on the top page, that little square box close next to the city pier is our salmon fish pen. During tent looking last year, the step biologist was concerned about safety issues, so was weakness, the mini grant program last fall, we got ourselves together and tried again. At that meeting, to address this issue, John Stangler, the mid-coast district ODFW biologist, was there, he's kind of our boss, and Brian Hudson is the mid-coast step advisory committee, one of the members. So we went into, oh, and our honorable seat, Spark, is there. We went into this originally as to replacing the fish pen, that was our vision. These two people from ODFW said, you know what, we have problems with the access going out of your fish pen and the dock. Our vision is you guys do the fish pen and do that dock and that access all the way in there. We don't want to run a step program where we have an accident. With that being said, listen, we have grant funding out there. And we went through requirements, whether it need to be public access, you know, just to save ADA, all the whatups and this, you know, we put money in the projects, other never goes to, so even the city's watershed, they control or enclosed area, these fundings, funds are available. There's not any big criteria other than what I would understand, so just a few permit processes with water permits or whatever, correct?
And using a fiscal agent in the process, what came up as well.
So their suggestion was to get a technical assistance design thing in place in the next thirty days so we can submit the grant. Our question to the city is, and we had this discussion with Brady, that's the city's dock pier that's falling down out there. If that grant went through, our vision of it is most of that could be replaced through that step grant and not any cost to the city.
And our problem would be what, to get a free dock and a free ramp and all that? That's the city.
It's a hard deal.
Yeah, it's a pretty hard thing, right?
So we would like your blessings or...
Brady, do you have any input on that?
No, I just, we talked about the engineering aspects and doing it right and, you know, making sure we cover every step to get this done correctly.
There was another issue as far as funding is not going to the city, but needs to go to a nonprofit.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I, there's another meeting, a step meeting next Monday, and we, you know, we came out of that with an overwhelming consensus of what we wanted to do last, but we didn't really vote on things and we know that there's a pretty symbiotic nonprofit organization that we can't bunch up, but they were once one, although we thought of it. What I was going to do is find three of them and let that committee members choose.
Find three nonprofits?
Mm-hmm.
I see. Who are the other nonprofits besides that?
Well, it was suggested, what did they say, they went through Lions Club and Clorns and, but, I probably know where it's going to end up, but I think that it, you know, you at least have to put that out there to the committee to let them choose, you know. So, and Steve, what I understood them to say is once that's granted, it's kind of first come, first served, and it might be around five months or something for this money to come out, so the project wouldn't be totally completed until perhaps this fall if we got the funding. The positive side of it is they pointed out to us that Depot Bay is one of the first step programs in Oregon, which we didn't know. And, I mean, it's been going on for over thirty years and they like it. So we have to go under a review every five years whether they want to continue the project to even give us the age. So far, we've passed, they like the fin flipping social aspects of it, neighbors for the kids, we have the educational aspect of it, you know, especially every time that we show up in Flinna Depot Bay, we all know the economic impact of it. I had the opportunity in the last few weeks, matter of fact, it went way back to Brady taking me up to the reservoir last summer and getting educated on it. I've been around the National Fish Hatchery in Ludenworth, Washington for many years and been very close to the community involvement in hatcheries, and I think it's just a wonderful opportunity for Depot Bay to be able to move forward a little bit more with this whole hatch, salmon preservation and hatchery idea, but we won't get anywhere unless it's safe. You know, safe, you know, as soon as it's not safe, they're going to go, it's not going to get to that state. Take that step and then there's a lot of opportunity to discuss other things and I'm fully supportive of the good work that Beanie and his people have been doing on this to get ready to replace that dock and make it safe so our kids, when they go up there, we do the clipping, aren't in danger.
The reason for bringing this tonight is that it deprives everybody here on the council that this is on the radar screen now. And if we want to move, if these guys are going to move forward, they're going to bring back something to us in two weeks at our next March third meeting, and we will discuss it further and then we'll take action if deemed necessary and wanted to make this project happen. This is more an FYI tonight than it is any kind of action item for the evening. There's another issue going on up at the dam or at the pond that is the potential that there's some undermining going from the water source, and we know we have a problem with the sluice gate too. So this all kind of plays together with what we're going to be doing as a city council, and this is something we need to deal with quicker than a rumble, Brady, rather sooner than...
Yeah, right.
And so I had suggested with Brady that, you know, a lot of us, I have been up there a couple of times, Steve's been up there, I don't know if Joe or Kathy...
I've never...
I'm with, you, Robert's been up there.
But I've wanted to...
Yeah, well, that's, I'm just, I'd ask Brady and Beanie if they could take us on a little tour this Monday coming, the twenty-third.
Is it private or can anybody go up there? Is it a lot gate or...
It's our water supply, so it's got to be restricted.
Yeah, what I was thinking for all of us, one, we could go up there and if you haven't seen it, it's really fascinating, it's a great project. And two, the other thing is getting some hands-on, firsthand look at this dam and this gate, because we're going to have to fund that and get that taken care of because that is our water supply. And so I just thought if it works, we get together next Monday at ten and maybe I'll bring a box of walnuts and some coffee.
The educational component on this is huge for our kids. Yeah, and we're already investing in it over at Neighbors for Kids. We have a science program, this would expand our ability to educate the kids even further and have relationships and partnerships with other organizations to expand that whole educational aspect of what we do. So, you know, I'm nothing but enthusiastic about it. But the one thing that we should do is take our fishing poles up there because I...
There's a great...
We need, we need to cut some of those cutthroat... There are no cutthroat, it is close to fishing.
All right, so you guys are going to work on this with the meeting next Monday, correct?
Next Monday. What I would like is a consensus or overwhelming feeling to go ahead and say, hey, when we do this technical assistance thing, we're going to include that broken down piece of your dock.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And we'll trust you something, what's that, no, do you want, I don't think we need to do anything, because you're going to talk about this at your meeting, bring it back to us, right?
And what...
Because we're going to have to fund the tech...
And we can just kind of do, but we're going to...
We're going to have to...
Until we hear no from you, we're going to include you.
Absolutely, and we ultimately are going to fund the technical assistance grant, is that correct? As a city council?
I don't know that you have to, we'll find out, but the supplier, did you have the name of the supplier on here? I have a, no, I'm here, I have a list, I don't have a... The folks who will put the dock in may well do a portion of the technical assistance, so I don't know how much engineering...
We'll find out, bring it to us if you need that.
Right, it is my impression from John Stangler, they want this project done and they will help us do it.
That's right.
Anyway, they can do it.
Bring it back to us, we're going to get it done.
It's a get it done thing, that's what it is.
Yeah, and Brady, can we set a time for, can we set a time for you two gentlemen to go up to the pond, to water supply and take a look at this?
Yeah, I could work my schedule around when you want to get up there.
I know, you're off on Monday, right? How are we, what time do you have to fly to work?
Well, I'm pretty flexible, so...
Ten o'clock?
Sure.
Eleven o'clock? For the coffee to kick in.
Oh, come on!
Come on, ten o'clock, I'll bring doughnuts.
Okay.
Ten o'clock, I'm going to... So we need, they need it between this water plant on the twenty-third and ten, that's the one right there on Collins Street, and then we'll go on up.
Okay.
You know, I have my fishing here with me.
No, you want the boots.
I'm going to have our swimsuits.
This photograph in the bottom was just an example of what they have, and we would have had hand ratings and things on it, but they're, what I've seen, they're...
It's awesome.
A high quality dock, something like you'd see on Number One down there in Depot Bay. I mean, they're saying this is going to last twenty-five years or better. You see that, see how the current one is falling into the water there?
Yes.
And...
Walk them over.
And Beanie wouldn't even let me out on the other thing, he was worried that I was going to fall through there. It's a pretty dangerous piece for a person, for a person with ego. So on this back page, I think under R and E, it's kind of highlighted, Paul Carver, one of our, that is the grant that we would be going through here, and it kind of gets the whole list and the proceedings just for your information. Stangler said there's one in there for that.
Yep.
Any questions?
Thank you, thank you. Thanks for the education.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving right along, Perry, are you going to mention this correspondence here or you want me to? Because I have a little story for this.
Yeah, I was a little mistook. I think what you're holding up is the importance of the SEI, SEI files.
Let me tell you something, we all have to do this, Robert, you and I, different, they're included. I can tell you Brett Barry didn't do this, and boy, did they come down on him, it was like, no, it was like a Holocaust, they were just all over him.
Oh, that, yeah.
Definitely take the time, report your SEI and file it, you do not want these people crawling through your line.
Because what is it?
It's your financially, you know, interest statement, in other words, you're going to say you're not financially inclined with the city of Depot Bay, they're not making money. As maybe a governor's girlfriend, then...
Well, they could have been a little bit more sure about that, but okay.
Well, that's what, basically, you're going to pull it up...
That's not as bad as it says, it's what it is.
You're going to put it electronically now too. It's really simple, it takes, it took me ten minutes.
So, okay.
Yeah, so just...
So you're going to download something and...
It's right here, just take it and you'll see it's at www.org.gov dot O G E C, and it just comes right up. I'll put it on top of my paper work. Yeah. We have a lot of time, just... Yeah, we're going to, Perry, I'll say something about this too.
They're going to mail, this is the last year that they, Oregon Government Ethics Commission, is going to mail out your SEIs. They mail them to you at your home addresses in March. Starting next year, no more mailings, everybody's got to go online. I know you can, but if you do go online, don't fill out the sample, they will not accept that.
So you want us to do the paper filing issue?
Yeah, if you go online and you pull up the sample, which is there for your information, so you can look at it and go, okay.
Then that's the one for next year, you'll have to file it electronically.
Next year it's totally electronically, but if you complete the sample one and submit it, you didn't file, they'll come back at you. So if you want to wait for this mail-in one in March, that's fine. Like I say, just caution, don't do the sample one, so...
Perry, do you have any correspondence?
I have one piece of correspondence this evening, it's a letter from Neighbors for Kids. N F K will be hosting a family literacy event on the twenty-first of February from ten to one P M. There's going to be activities and booths and exhibits, demonstrations.
This is big. This is big.
It's something, I'm still not seeing ice cream as pancakes, but you know. Creating a salmon crayons just totally intrigues me.
I mean, they're talking big, and I'm going to be the breeder.
All right. Anyway, that's the old horse, you're all invited.
What do you have on your city staff report tonight?
Just real quick, I was going to, I'm doing a, getting price quotes for the emergency communications trailer, we're still working on getting that put together for price quotes together, getting all the first aid equipment. I've got a company, it's Pope Supply, they're a local safety supply company out of Glen Falls, and Colin Pope is putting together some really good price quotes for his municipal pricing for kits for this same type of stuff he supplied, new ports with theirs, and so it looks really feasible and some great pricing, but I will have all that together hopefully by the next meeting. We'll try to get this application finished. Everything else is just that the crew's doing a great job on keeping up with projects. We're to read water readers right now, we're taking advantage of the weather, fixing the roads right now, we got a lot of potholes and they're making hot mix now, so we're taking advantage of things we can do now, this is almost like summer these last few days, so we're really taking advantage of that stuff. So just real quick, everything's going real well.
The only thing I would like to just let you know that we do have our request for proposals out for our software upgrade. It closes March sixth, and we have an advertising for the attorney, our request for proposals that closed on March fourth, and we haven't put the RFP out for a harbor fuel supplier yet, but we need to do that like ASAP, so stacks of RFPs.
Can I ask a question about the municipal software? On your RFP, and I actually read that RFP since it's posted on the website, is, are you looking for with the municipal software, some kind of interface that goes from the guys in the field reading the meters to downloading it into the software in the office?
We are looking for that capability.
Okay, because I think that would be a great handy, I can take that time and use it on other projects, because Brady needs all the hands on that. Or I mean Kathy, yeah, probably Kathy's job a lot easier too.
It certainly would cut down on the time.
Yes, so we can focus on other higher value targets. Okay, anybody have any city council comments today?
Well, I'll go to Robert.
I just have one comment to make, and that is in reference to what Brady had in his report, and that is that I got to see firsthand what our fifty thousand dollars bought in the way of the vacuum trailer, and it is awesome. It's going to be worth every penny we spend. I saw it suck up, I just got over to where it was being used back by my house at the last few seconds to see a huge gaping hole, six feet down, this nozzle stuck into some water that turned out to be probably forty or fifty gallons, and it went, I mean, I saw the water swirl over to this suction thing.
Forty minutes of excavating that hole, six feet down.
Incredible. Could have saved a lot of time and a lot of money.
I would entreat the president to look at getting on the agenda and back to the harbor, the consideration of putting a surcharge for using credit cards to pay for fuel, which I think the city staff that supplies on how much that actually costs the city per year is quantitative fact in black and white, and if, and to be able... And if, uh, and be able to pass that surcharge on to the purchasers of fuel could save the, the city, I'm sure, thousands of dollars on the fuel, uh, operation.
Wasn't there something, Perry, that, uh, procured us from adding a surcharge when we could offer a discount for cash?
You know, I, I don't remember all those details, there was quite that lengthy information that was provided by the attorney. But, but I'm raising my hand because, um, the last time I talked to the mayor, because we, that was that credit card surcharge was something I've been bringing forward on the tolls agendas. And the last time I talked to the mayor, which was prior to the meeting before this one, he, um, said that he wants that to go to the Harbor Master Plan Advisory Committee as part of the review. So, that's why it hasn't been on, so just for your information.
You know, it strikes me that we're kind of RFPing out for a new fuel provider. The idea behind it is to give us a service that's comparable at a lower price, I assume. And it seems to me that if, uh, I'm with Jerome, if we're going to do this thing, and I'll talk with the mayor as well, but if we're going to do this thing, it seems like the meeting you bring us these RFPs is the meeting we should talk about the discount for paying cash as opposed to, uh, use the credit card. Because I remember the language the attorney said, and it was pretty, it was pretty precise in its, uh, effect that if we did a surcharge, then we'd have to do the same surcharge through the rest of the city's services like, uh, bills and things like that, isn't it, wasn't that the concept?
I recall that he spoke to that, but then I, I also recall that I believe that he had a way to structure it so it would only apply to fuel. I have to believe that.
I, I, I wasn't aware that the city, um, took credit cards. We do. So, all of that has the effect of, just like a fuel bomb, right? Is that if, um, I'm, I'm relatively, I think I'm on good ground to estimate with, uh, with staff time that it costs three percent to process a credit card. And, uh, if we're talking, say, four dollar fuel, that's, uh, you know, that's twelve cents a gallon.
Yeah, that's, that's...
That we're eating.
It's, you and I experienced when we took credit cards into restaurants.
Yeah, that's what, and, and I just don't think with the, uh, situation that the, 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 the fuel is, is probably operating at a net loss anyway, that this could help, uh, equalize that, and it's fair. It's absolutely fair.
Absolutely. I, I promise I'll talk to the mayor about this. And, uh, how soon before you get the RFP out on the fuel, is that going to happen before the next meeting?
It, yes.
And so we will be discussing that RFP then in the following meeting, which will be March twenty, is that what it is? First meeting.
Well, I know Brady and I, we talked about, I, I, I don't believe we're going to put it out in the papers. We're talking about how to proceed with this RFP. Uh, we, we've started generating a list of people to send it to, and I think we have five, I don't think so.
Yeah, some of the prior vendors we used originally.
Yeah, because we're trying to get at least good three, a minimum of three good proposals back. In fact, we have five or six now.
You know, Jerome, I'll, I'll talk with AJ and I'll bring that forward, because I agree with you. I'd rather, and especially since our season is coming upon us down there. It makes sense to get something done sooner rather than later, I agree with that.
Would you all like, like I say, as far as what the city attorney spoke to, I remember it being very detailed.
Yeah, it was, it was a big pack.
Would you like that redistributed to you for me with this?
And why don't we do, and what, maybe not next meeting, because we're not going to be ready, because I think we should talk about it at the same time we talk about this RFP, at least that makes sense to me.
Okay.
So, maybe what we can do is have you redistribute them when you bring back the RFPs and we put that on the agenda, that way we're talking turkey on both items.
I mean, I, uh, this is partly, Mr. President, excuse me, um, partly my fault too, but I was, uh, I was disappointed to see Burke, uh, sprinting leave because I wanted to sit high in the meeting after the meeting, I was worried to death, I think.
That's, well, at least we're doing it before you, I heard you had time, as well as the last day of meetings. Are there any more council comments? None? It is eight minutes after nine, I declare this meeting adjourned. Okay.
Thank you for...